And he has a presentation that he's left with the clerk of the club's contribution of two picnic tables to the E.E. Mitchellson splash pad. Mr. Clerk, would you like to elaborate, please?
The Niagara Falls Soccer Club have donated $2,500 which will go towards those picnic tables or sorry benches that'll be at the Mitchellson splash pad and I guess I could hand this to you or to our treasurer probably.
Thank you again on behalf of members of council. We thank the Niagara Falls Soccer Club for their generosity once again and their support. So, thank you to all involved and who were involved in raising those funds. The next order on the agenda is the Korean Veterans Association and this evening we have George Barrick, President, and also representatives here with us, Nick Ross I see is here as well, of the Korean Veterans Association who are going to request that July 5th to July 12th be proclaimed Korea Veterans Week and an associated flag raising. Gentlemen, would you like to come forward, please? Thank you for being here. Yes, please.
Good evening, your worship, Ms. Elsie, members of city council, ladies and gentlemen. As the President of Unit 15, Korean Veterans Association of Canada, and also a resident of Niagara Falls, I am pleased to have this opportunity to speak tonight in support of the proposal that has been brought before council for your consideration. The proposal is to have the week of July 5th through to the 12th, 2010 declared as Korea War Veterans Week, to honor all Korean War veterans in commemoration of the 60th anniversary of the start of the war in Korea which began on June 25th, 1950, and ended with a ceasefire being signed on July 27th, 1953. During that time period, some 27,000 Canadians, many from the Niagara region, served under the flag of the United Nations in Korea, and a further 10,000 in the post-war years until the end of 1955. In 1950, Canada answered the call and was part of the 16 nations that sent fighting troops to the aid of the Republic of South Korea after they were invaded by the communist forces of North Korea. Five other nations provided medical units in support, totaling 21 nations in all. The President of South Korea, Mr. Lee Mung-bak, and his government are arranging special events and dinners to take place during 2010 in each of the 21 countries that were involved in the war to make sure that all veterans will be honored. Two days ago, just this past Saturday, the President, who is here in Canada to attend the G20 meetings, before a large gathering of veterans laid a wreath at the Korea War Veterans National Wall of Remembrance which is situated in Medivale Cemetery in Brampton to one of those Canadians who gave their lives for the freedom that exists in South Korea today. Further events sponsored by the government of South Korea will take place during 2010 in Ottawa, Edmonton, Vancouver, plus the annual parade and service on July 27th at the Wall of Remembrance in Brampton. This year's parade and service on July the 27th at the Wall of Remembrance, this will be also marked the New Korea War Veterans Day. This new nationally celebrated day came to being on April the 29th of this year when a motion was placed before the Senate in Ottawa to declare the 27th of July each year the date that the ceasefire was signed as Korea War Veterans Day. This motion received the full support and approval of the Senate. Finally, for your information, locally, the cities of Port Colby and St. Catherine's have both proclaimed Korea War Veterans Week, and the Korea Veterans Association have already had one flag raising ceremony in Port Colby this past week. If you should endorse the proposal tonight, Unit 15 Niagara, Korea Veterans Association of Canada, plans to raise the flag of the United Nations here at City Hall at 11:15 a.m. on Monday, July 5th, where it will fly for one week until Monday, July 12th. And I won't, unless there's any questions, I'll step down. I know you're very busy tonight.
Thank you very much, Mr. Barrick. We do have some questions. Counselor Thompson, you want to move the...
No, I've moved the motion, yes.
Okay. Are there any questions, by the way? Having seen none. Okay, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo. And all those in favor, motions carried. Mr. Barrick, we wanted to thank Unit 15 for your very active involvement in our community. Certainly, as veterans, we always respect and appreciate your contributions. We are more than pleased I'll be with you then on Monday, July 5th at 11:15 to raise the flag. Look forward to that. And we thank you for joining us this evening to make us aware.
Thank you, your worship. Thank you, members of council.
Thank you, members of council as well. Members also attending the council this evening is Dr. John Barker who was honored by the Ontario Heritage Trust Community Recognition Program for his efforts in the natural heritage category. And he's here with us tonight. I'd like to present him with his certificate. So, Dr. Barker, could you come forward, please?
You recall that our other honored Ontario Heritage Trust recipients were awarded with their certificates at a previous council meeting, but John wasn't able to be here. So, this evening, John, it is my pleasure to present to you this certificate in appreciation of your volunteer work to identify, preserve, protect, and promote our province's rich heritage. You have worked diligently for more than 30 years with the protection of the environment, and we thank you for your commitment to protect valuable farmland, forest, wetland, creek, or any other important natural feature in the name of conservation. Thank you for your work in our community and congratulations on your award. And I have the privilege of presenting this to you with the support of our council. We appreciate your efforts. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
As well we have.
Thank you. I'm very honored to receive this support and I think some of the good work that I've been able to do is coming forth in the environmental policies which will be discussed later in the municipal council agenda. So, thank you. Thank you again.
Move on to planning matters. Mr. Clerk, would you please introduce the next item on the agenda?
A public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city's zoning bylaw to permit a proposed restaurant and retail sales ancillary to a warehouse at 4,444 Montrose Road. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Friday, May 28th, 2010, and by posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who wants notice of the passage of the zoning bylaw amendment to participate in any site plan process if applicable or preserve their opportunity to appeal to the Ontario Municipal Board shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber.
Thank you very much. At this time, we would ask the Director of Planning to explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment. Mr. Hurlovich?
Thank you, your worship. This property is an existing industrial building. Actually, there are two buildings on the site. The property is located on the east side of Montrose Road between Gallenger Street and Industrial Drive. On the opposite side of the street, on the west side, is a chiropractic clinic. Residential uses to the north is a used car lot. Industrial uses to the east and south of the property. Property is approximately 1.2 hectares in size. The building that's under consideration for this zoning is outlined in red. The proposal is to add a restaurant use to the property, shown in blue, and to also allow 25% of the floor area to be used for retail sales. There's a second building on the site. This site also shows the parking. The applicant is requesting a 70-seat restaurant be added to the property as well as to allow 25% of the floor area of the warehouse to be used for warehouse for retail sales. They have also requested a zero side yard, which is the existing side yard on the south side of the property, and a 1.5-meter side yard on the north side. They've also asked that the landscaping requirement be waived along the front yards. That is the lot line common with Montrose Road. The applicant has also asked for the passage of a deeming bylaw to allow the three lots that are involved in this property to merge into one. The official plan for the area designates the lands as industrial. The industrial designation allows industrial uses as well as complementary uses such as restaurants and retail showrooms. Staff have reviewed the application and finds that it does conform with the official plan. The zoning for the property is to allow the 70-seat restaurant and 25% warehousing. This complies with the official plan and does not create a significant commercial function that would detract from the industrial uses in the surrounding area. The front yard, the bylaw requires a 67% front yard landscaped area. The applicant's requesting zero. Staff is proposing that we actually require a 2-meter wide landscape strip along the Montrose Road frontage. This could be achieved by reducing the width of the driveway between the parking aisles and not have any impact on the parking area. The, so that goes on, say the same thing. And the reductions with respect to the side yards recognize the existing location of the building. Therefore, staff have no concerns with that request. And then lastly, the deeming bylaw would allow all three lots in a plan of subdivision to function as one and that they would be treated as one for zoning purposes. Therefore, staff has concluded that the proposal complies with the official plan with respect to the commercial services and the complementary land uses. The restaurant showroom would only occupy a small portion of the property and would not detract from the industrial significance. There's sufficient parking to accommodate the use. We are recommending a landscape strip along Montrose Road, and the lands would be zoned as one property once the deeming bylaw is registered. Therefore, we are recommending the council add a site-specific provision to the industrial zone to allow the restaurant, retail, ancillary, warehouse use, and to require an agreement with the applicant for the 2-meter-wide landscape strip along the frontage of the property, and that council also deem lots 2, 3, and 4 in the registered plan to no longer be lots within a plan of subdivision. Those are the highlights.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hurlovich. And the members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting will result in the Ontario Municipal Board dismissing a referral that it receives. Failure to sign the sign-in sheets will result in staff rejecting an appeal as per Section 34, subsection 19 of the Planning Act. At this time, council will hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment. And before I do that, I'm going to ask, to allow Counselor Ione to ask a question of the planner?
Yeah, I just need some clarification. Is he suggesting that we, he suggested that the applicant wanted to waive the landscaping adjacent to Montrose Road. Is his recommendation that we allow him to waive that and move it closer to the building or to keep it along Montrose Road?
Mr. Hurlovich?
Yes, your worship. The bylaw requires 67% of the front yard to be landscaped. So, we are saying that this doesn't need to be 67%, but we would like to have 2 meters of landscaping. It would be adjacent to the road.
Okay.
Are you back yet?
Yeah, sure.
And so, in essence, in front of the building, there are two roads of parking with an aisle in between those roads of parking. And if that aisle way between the roads of parking was reduced by 2 meters, it would still provide sufficient space for cars to back up because the 2 meters can be accommodated along the left side of the slide next to the road along.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Hurlovich. So, at this time, council will hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment. Yes, please come forward.
I just...
Please, please come forward. Be kind enough to identify yourself for the record, please, and you have 10 minutes if you wish.
No, I don't need that. Jean Grandoni. And I see you mentioned Gallenger Street, which is close to the NSNT right-of-way, is it not? Is this, like you said, north of McLeod? It sounds like it's north of Highway 20. That would be a better description. Where's the old NSNT right-of-way here?
Mr. Hurlovich?
Is Gallenger Street it?
Yeah, we're on the west side of the 2EW from the NSNT crosses at this point. We're south of the Barrowstone Road.
Yeah. Gallenger Street actually looks like the old NSNT right-of-way, is it not?
It may be. Maybe. Yes.
Okay. I thought that it might be approaching on that. I couldn't tell from the first notice.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment? Please come forward, sir. And your name, please?
Michael Manon. I own some property directly across the street from the proposed, the proposal.
Yes?
Mr. Hurlovich, I hope I'll be at, yeah, right there where the dot is. I hope not conveniently forgot to mention that there's some residential property across the street there. And we just recently, I just recently constructed a couple residential units there that's conducive to that area. So, you know, I just want city council to consider the noise ordinances if there are to approve this type of, I'm concerned about the restaurant, basically. And I know that Mr. Hurlovich has mentioned it's a 70-seat restaurant and it's not a large restaurant by any means. But I'd like council to consider the residential side of it, of the street there. And the reason why I say that is it's a busy street as it is, and at 5 o'clock, it's nice that it kind of quiets down. You get a little bit of peace at that time. And I just think that if something like this establishment goes, it just creates more, more busyness in that area. And with that light industrial zoning where everything's light industrial, everything kind of closes up at 5 or 6 o'clock, and we have kind of a quiet, peaceful time. Now, the bigger issue also is I have a little baby, and I'm worried about noise ordinances. So, a bigger issue that I foresee in the future is that if a restaurant's approved now, what happens in the future? Is there a bar or patio that's allowed outside? Is there going to be a band playing till 1 o'clock or 2 o'clock in the morning? So, these are the bigger issues that I have, and I think that the light industrial zoning was there. I understand that the official plan allows for special zoning, as you kind of mentioned, and that this type of thing might be conducive to the area. But I just think that, you know, across the street was residential zoning first. A light industrial was there to begin with, and I just want city, the city council to really consider what we have here at stake across the street. And I have, you know, I invested a pretty good sum of money in building just recently, constructing two, two new parcels of property. And I went to town, the city council, and I made sure that I was meeting all the requirements, and I wanted to do what city council had planned for my piece of land. So, that's why, that's what I'm here for. I'm more concerned for the noise. I had a similar issue with Alderman Ione about the landscaping. I still, I'm still a little bit confused. I'm right, basically right across the street where the parking would be. In the very least, we need to have maybe some more landscaping, some mature trees put in. And again, I'm concerned about bar issues, bands playing, what time is this place closing? Because I have a little baby, you know, it's going to be tough. So...
Thank you. We'll see if we can answer your questions. Mr. Hurlovich, you wish to address those at this point, or would you like the applicant to do so?
The, I haven't heard the proponent wants to put in an outdoor patio, but he would be allowed to, so he may be able to address that. I believe the city's noise bylaw would address the noise issues with respect to times of operation.
Right. So, it would be odd if it would go beyond 11 p.m., but that might be a possibility if they apply for that in the future. Mr. Clerk?
Noise bylaw prohibits amplified music or amplified noise after 9 o'clock in that area. That doesn't mean that it can't be inside of the bar, but obviously, if there's a complaint under our noise bylaw, that would be taken into account. As far as an outdoor patio, obviously, an applicant can make an application for an outdoor patio. We would deal with that, I guess, as Mr. Hurlovich says it is permitted. We do have a complaint process, obviously, under our noise bylaw with regards to noises, and it's proven effective in the past.
So, if I might add, you're voting on, obviously, it looks like more of a formality at this point where council has approved this and...
No, we haven't approved it yet. You're having a chance to...
You'll do it now, right in front. Well, I'm just saying, I'm curious why, you know, in a light industrial area, I mean, no, I'm not here to take away anything from the applicant, really. Like, I'm not here to stop any nature of business, but I'm just, sometimes commercial restaurants are more conducive in better, in other areas of the city. And I'm just a little bit confused as to why maybe a commercial establishment in a light industrial zoning that really, everything closes up with mechanic shops and everything at 5 or 6 o'clock and at the latest, 7 o'clock. So, I'm just curious, the thinking by the city on this. And, you know, knowing that you have, you have residential zoning directly across the street, and can we make some concessions for landscaping? I haven't heard anything about landscaping. I've heard 0% somewhere. Let's at least do something as far as landscaping to protect the residents.
Yeah. You'll hear from the applicant yet, so are those your concerns?
Those are my concerns, yes.
And the planner did mention about the setback possibility, so he's making recommendations with respect to the landscaping. So, he just outlined that how that could be achieved.
Mature trees or something.
Well, we haven't heard that yet, but that, I'm not sure if that's a requirement. Mr. Hurlovich, would that be a requirement at all?
Yeah. Well, we wouldn't plant mature trees. There would be trees that would grow into something larger. But certainly, we could work with the applicant if, if this council directs that there's to be a 2-meter landscape strip. Council hasn't yet made its decision. And so, it may be that once council makes that decision, we could negotiate the cut type of trees that could go in.
Hopefully, it may be a little bit wider. He's got lots of land there.
Okay, thank you. We'll see if we can get your questions answered, Mr. Hurlovich.
Okay, great.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your concerns. Is there anyone else other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment? Okay. Having seen none, at this time, I'm going to ask the applicant or his representative to come forward. Chris Crustelli, for the record?
Thank you. Chris Crustelli, representing Marcel Dion Inc. and, your worship, Mayor Ted Selsey, and staff members and council members. Marcel Dion Inc. is requesting approval to recognize additional permitted uses. That is a 70-seat restaurant with 25% of the tenant's space as a retail area. 25%. All of these additional uses requested are recognized within the official plan. It is part of the report given to, worship, Mayor Ted Selsey, and members of council. Marcel Dion Inc.'s business occupies approximately 5,000 square feet of the center, one-story, separate building in the center of the site, and is surrounded by another separate building. All of those occupants are tenants, including Marcel Dion Inc. As a tenant, Mr. Dion pays rent and is not involved in any way with land ownership. The restaurant portion will be within the existing footprint of his tenant's space. There will be no additions to any of the existing buildings. Any exterior work to be done will involve relining the parking area, parking stalls. The recommendation portion of this report asks that council approve the application, recommending that a 2-meter-wide landscable space strip along the front of the property be agreed to. Please remember that Mr. Dion is a tenant and not the property owner. Mr. Dion has landscaped his storefront with approximately a 2-meter by 8-meter-long landscape planting area. I have some pictures that I took this morning, and maybe I can circulate it, and you can have a look at what I'm referring to. Thank you. Now, there's even tomato plants in there.
It's because it's just been opened in a restaurant.
There you go. Fresh fruit. The 2-meter-wide landscaping strip is approximately 42 meters long, or 138 feet, along, between the north driveway and the southerly driveway. That's 138 feet long, while Mr. Dion's storefront is 22 meters long. The 22 meters long is the actual tenant's space that he occupies. That's his storefront. The restaurant portion will be approximately 8.2 meters long, or 27 feet long. Mr. Dion feels it should not be his responsibility to landscape the roadside front of the 42-meter-long plaza when his restaurant storefront occupies 8 meters. There have, we had a public meeting in May at, at City Hall, and there were no objections In summary, and then I'd like to comment on some of the comments that the neighbor made. We wish to move forward with this application and are asking that this council approve the application excluding the recommendation of any landscaping strip of 42 meters long by 2 meters wide. The, the purpose of the restaurant is a promotional, it's to complement the promotional aspect of Marcel Dion Inc.'s business. And the operation of, the operations will be breakfast and lunch, and there's no plan to do dinners. There's no plan to have an outdoor patio. There's no plan to have any loud music. It'll be sandwiches and coffee and crescents and donuts type of things so that people can gather, and he can also use it. He has quite a few gatherings at his business for promotion and, and also fundraising for various charities. So, the idea is that he can, he can have this space so that he can help the promotion and, and of the events that he's, he is promoting. And again, the operational hours will be breakfast and lunch, and that's the intent of it. So, if there are any questions that, that I might have missed or comments that I may have missed, I'd be happy to try and answer them for you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Crustelli. Members of council, do you have questions for Mr. Crustelli? Counselor Peter Angelo?
Thanks, your worship. Just so that I'm clear, Mr. Dion is a tenant in this building. The building is not owned by him.
No.
However, he did have to receive permission to apply for the rezoning, otherwise we wouldn't have the application in front of us.
Yes, that's correct.
So, he needed, he needed approval, I guess, from the landowner to make the application.
Yes, that was granted.
And if council were to put restrictions on the, on the approval, and the owner of the property did not agree with them, then the rezoning would not go through? Perhaps that's a question for the planner, your worship.
Okay. Mr. Hurlovich, could you address that, please?
I think that's a good synopsis. So, yes, it would be a conditional zoning. If council was to approve staff's recommendation without the landscape strip, then the bylaw wouldn't come back. Actually, what we're asking for is that there be an agreement that he provide the landscape strip. We bring the bylaw forward to council, and then once that bylaw was approved, we would expect the landscape strip to be installed.
Counselor Peter Angelo, does that answer your question? Okay. Mr. Crustelli, does that, is there anything further you want to add to that? Have you talked to the landlord at all?
No, we haven't spoken to the landlord. The, the client is in, has some other issues that he's working on with the landlord as far as tenant improvements to prepare for this, this business, this, this extension to his business. And he didn't want to bring, bring it into the mix because he felt that maybe it would cause some other issues. So, no, he hasn't spoken to the owner, only because he's not an owner of the property. He, he's a tenant that is requesting this permission. There's no additions to the building. It's, it's all internal, within the footprint of the existing building.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Maves?
Yes, through your worship, to the planner, Mr. Hurlovich. Under the present zoning, light industrial, theoretically, there could be a factory in there operating 24 hours a day.
Mr. Hurlovich?
The, well, it's, it's a light industrial zone, so in essence, the light industrial zone, says your worship, no noise, vibration, absovent that would be noxious to anyone.
But he could have a workshop or a machine shop or something in there operating 24 hours a day? hours a day?
Something like that, yes. Manufacturing of goods would be allowed, so it could be...
So you would still have traffic possibly all night long there anyway, regardless?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from members of council, those present? No? Okay, having seen none, then, the public meeting with respect to the proposed zoning bylaw amendment is now concluded, in the pleasure of council. Counselor Maves?
Move the recommendation.
Okay, move the recommendation as it sits? Excuse me, Counselor Maves, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Moved by Counselor Maves, seconded by Counselor Carrio, up in Ontario, Counselor Thompson, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Iannone?
So, moving the motion on the floor means they have to provide the...
Finish what you're saying?
Yeah. Along Montrose Road and not sufficient that the planter that's in front of his building.
Oh, yes, that's why I asked to have that qualified. The recommendation is contained on the first page, correct? Members of council, is that, is that clear? Okay. Counselor Maves?
This is, this is including, this is including the landscaping or without the landscaping?
Yes, that's why, yes, you moved the recommendation.
Well, I'm just looking at the present building and the way it's situated, and been there several times. They're really out in front of there, it's all paved anyway. I don't see how any landscaping would add or subtract from it, so as far as I'm concerned, that could be taken out.
Well, Counselor Maves, that's why I asked you, because the recommendation is to include a two-meter-wide landscable space, that's in the recommendation.
That's why I'm scapegoating the phone.
There already is some landscaping in it.
So you want to delete that?
I'd like to delete that, yes.
Okay, the second, or are you in a...
Yes.
Okay, so please, that last line, you're deleting, correct? Members of council, you're aware of that?
Basically, from subject on.
From the word "subject" on. The clerk clarifies that, so the last two lines in the recommendation are deleted. The motion on the floor moved by Counselor Maves, seconded by Counselor Thompson. We'll call the vote. All those in favor? Motion is carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Christelli.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Mr. Dionne.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, would you introduce the next item on the agenda, please?
A public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city's zoning bylaw to permit rezoning land, site-specific residential apartment, 5C density and general commercial zones, and these are related to some city-owned lands on the east and west sides of Montrose Road, north of McLeod Road, and some own lands by McLeod Square Inc. on the west side of Montrose Road, north of McLeod. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Friday, May 28, 2010, and by posting a sign on the properties in question, anyone who wants notice of the passage of the zoning bylaw amendment to participate in any site plan process if applicable or preserve their opportunity to appeal to the Ontario Municipal Board shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. And once again, I'll ask the Director of Planning to explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment. Mr. Hilevich?
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. This is a, an application by both the city and by a private landowner, McLeod Square Inc. That's being processed simultaneously. The application is to zone lands on the west side of Montrose Road as a residential apartment 5C zone, and lands on the east side of Montrose Road to be rezoned as general commercial. The, the site plan or location map in front of you shows the property, so we're talking about a parcel of land on the west side of Montrose Road. For the most part, this is opposite the McBain Center and the skate park. There's a parcel of land immediately north of the skate park area that's labeled Parcel 3. The, the lands to the west and north are largely parklands, most people would recognize that it's the area where soil has been removed and stockpiled onto the back of that property, creating a high hill in that location. The lands to the north are residential properties along Charmwood Avenue. There are some lands to the further, to the west, which are also used for residential purposes. The lands to the east are largely industrial lands. I've mentioned the McBain Center, the south of Parcel 3. And south of Parcel 1 and Parcel 4 are lands that are owned by McLeod Square Inc., which is, we're currently processing in the office, a site plan application for a Lowe's Home Improvement Center on that site, among another, among a number of other commercial uses that would go on that property. Parcel 1, probably easier to say here, Parcel 1 is currently zoned shopping center commercial, although it's owned by the city. So it's the intention to retain Parcel 1 by the city and to rezone that from shopping center commercial to open space, which would be used in conjunction with the lands to the west and north for park purposes. Parcel 2 is owned by the city. This is partially zoned shopping center commercial, and a small portion, about where the arrow is pointing, is zoned open space. So all of that, Parcel 2 would be zoned, the apartment 5C zone. And then Parcel 4, which is owned by McLeod Square Inc., would also be rezoned from shopping center commercial to a R5C zone. Parcel 3, which is owned by the city, is a parcel of land that's currently zoned shopping center. It's limited right now to institutional and recreational uses, but that would be zoned for general commercial purposes. This basically shows an air photo of the same location with the housing units and industrial uses to the east of the site. The lands in total are 9.4 hectares, 23.3 acres of land. As I mentioned, the lands which are Parcel 1 would be, remain in city's ownership. The lands on the west side of Montrose Road are to be developed for apartment or townhouse uses. The city lands would be sold. The lands on the east side of, or Montrose Road will be used for commercial purposes. The city helped to open houses with the public in the area. There were no objections expressed during that, those meetings, although residents did have questions and concerns about the proposed park. There are some concerns as well about the drainage behind the dwellings on the south side of Charmwood Avenue. The location of the park, or entrance to the park, rather, was a concern, and they expressed some concerns about all-terrain vehicles. There was one resident who expressed concerns about the lighting of the parking lot for the future Lowe's Home Improvement Center, which is south of the hill. The lands are designated, excuse me, major commercial and open space in the official plan. The open-space lands really apply to those lands along Parcel 1, which will remain as parkland. Parcels 2, 3, and 4 are all designated major commercial and are located within the Niagara Square Retail District. The lands designated major commercial are intended primarily to serve a wide range of shopping and commercial uses, but there are also policies that permit lands that are surplus to commercial needs to be used for residential purposes. So Parcels 2 and 4, which are the parcels on the west side of Montrose Road, are suitable for residential use, because if you comply with the official plan, they are surplus to need. The residential uses as well, close to major shopping centers, will provide a market to help strengthen and support the commercial uses. The height and density of the official plan for residential uses along an arterial road, which is what Montrose Road is, allows up to six stories in height and 100 units per hectare. This is in keeping with the official plan policy. The proposed residential development will be separated from the low-density residential areas along Charmwood and the lands to the west by the parkland. The development will have direct access to an arterial road, Montrose Road, and again to McLeod Road, which is also a arterial road. And then Parcel 3 is to be, is designated major commercial, and so the commercial zone that's proposed does comply with the OP. The proposed zoning for Parcel 1 will be open space in keeping with the balance of the parkland and with the fact that the city intends to retain ownership of those lands. Parcels 2 and 4 typically permit apartment buildings up to, in R5C zone, permits apartment buildings up to six stories and 100 units in density. Staff is suggesting that in order to provide some, some variety and some additional opportunities there, in addition to apartment buildings, we would be allowed to also have townhouse dwellings. Those would develop at the R4 zone density, which is about 40 units per hectare for townhouses. But the mix of apartments and townhouses we see is providing an appropriate transition between the commercial uses and the lower-density residential uses to the north. The, as well, the R4 and R5C standards require buildings to be set back a distance of 50% of the height, 40% of the landscaping, and these standards would provide adequate amenities for development. Parcels 2 and 4 are adjacent to a former landfill site, and so therefore, policies do require that there would be environmental assessments conducted before the development actually occurs. Therefore, we are recommending that there be a holding provision that would be placed on those sites in order to supply a record of site condition. Parcel 3 is not affected in the same way for recommending a holding provision there, because as you recall, council dealt with a number of zoning properties in the same area a few months ago, because the McLeod Road, as it crosses over the QEW, the interchange requires improvements, and anybody developing for commercial purposes is expected to contribute financially toward those improvements. So the holding provision would be there until a purchaser was to develop that property for holding. As well, on the east side of that city-owned property, on the, just beyond the skateboard park, people who are familiar with the area will know it's quite a tree area and a steep slope. That's an environmental area, and so therefore, an environmental impact study would also be required, so that's also such as the holding provision for Parcel 3. The, so in addition to the site-specific zoning, we're recommending an increase in lot frontage per lot from 30 meters to 45 meters. The property is fairly shallow between the road and the, and the hill, which would now be the park, and so therefore, in order to compensate for the, what it lacks in depth, we're recommending that it receive an additional width. The apartment buildings would require typically a, a distance separation from the west lot line of half the building height or 10 meters. We're suggesting that 7.5 meters would be appropriate, again, because the parkland will help provide a additional buffer from the lower-density areas, and therefore, again, gives a little bit more flexibility for the future development of that property. We're also recommending, because of the size of the property, that one or more apartment buildings be allowed on those sites. Typically, our zoning bylaw permits only one apartment building per site. As well, we're recommending then, if there are more than one apartment building per site, that there be a distance between each apartment building of 19 meters, which is about the height of the buildings, so that gives adequate separation between windows to habitable rooms. On the east side of Montrose Road, the GC, the general commercial zoning, again, we're recommending that the frontage be increased from six meters to about 60 meters. Therefore, the property if sold could be divided into two parcels. We are requiring a six-meter landscape strip to be introduced along Montrose Road, again, recognizing that there will be residential uses placed on the west side, and therefore, we want to provide a separation between the business and the residential area. And six meters is the same landscape strip that we have between the McBain parking lot and the road, so therefore, it would enhance the appeal of the entire district. Therefore, the staff have found that the applications do comply with the official plan, that holding provisions would be used to ensure that the properties are examined and studied before construction occurs. Therefore, we are recommending that council approve the application of Parcel 1 as open space zone and rezone Parcels 2 and 4 to site-specific residential apartment 5C density zone, and to rezone Parcel 3 to site-specific general commercial zone, subject to the placement of holding provisions that I've outlined, and to allow the, the passing of the, so, and those regulations will be addressed in the report, will also be included in the zoning. Those are the highlights of the application.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hilevich. And once again, members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting will result in the Ontario Municipal Board dismissing any referral that it receives. Failure to sign the sign-in sheets will result in staff rejecting an appeal as per Section 34, subsection 19 of the Planning Act. At this time, council will hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to this matter. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to the proposed zoning bylaw amendment? For third time, is there anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed zoning bylaw amendment? Okay. Council has heard from staff. This is a city-initiated application. Is there any clarification required by members of council, or further questions by members of council? Having seen none, then, the public meeting with respect to the proposed zoning bylaw amendment is now concluded, in the pleasure of council. Moved by Counselor Iannone, seconded by Counselor Carrio. Any further discussions or comments? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion is carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, would you introduce the next item on the agenda, please?
Your Worship, a public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city's official plan to update the city's environmental policies. Notice of application in public meeting was given in accordance with the regulations by publishing a notice in the Niagara Falls Review on Saturday, May 29, 2010, and a notice was sent by first-class mail on Thursday, May 20, and emailed May 27 to various agencies and persons who I have listed here. Anyone who wants notice of, notice of passage of the official plan amendment or preserve their opportunity to appeal to the Ontario Municipal Board shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber.
And once again, I'm going to ask the Director of Planning to explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment. Mr. Hilevich?
Thank you, Worship. And I'm joined this evening with, by Francesca Berardi, who's our senior planner, who has worked extensively on these application, or these policies, rather. Certainly, a fair amount of public involvement, as well as input from various agencies and divisions that we've been working with over the last, more than a year on these policies. This is a city-initiated amendment to update our official plan, to revise our existing environmental policies, and to add new policies. The reason behind this, these changes are that there have been a number of provincial changes in legislation, been updates to the provincial policy statements, there have been updates to the Conservation Authorities Act, we've had the introduction of the Greater Golden Horseshoe Growth Plan, we have the Green, or Clean Water Act. All of those have our provincial initiatives that we must be consistent with. As well, we have Amendment Number 187, which was adopted by the region, which introduced new environmental policies at the regional level, and our plans must comply with the region's plan. Our official plan policies really date back to 1993. There have been some very minor updates in the intervening years, but we're really talking about policies that are almost 20 years old. There are a number of environmental studies that have also been completed for Niagara Falls and our planning area, and so therefore, we want to recognize the, the new work that was done. This includes new mapping by the Ministry of Natural Resources of our wetlands. As well, we have a natural heritage inventory that was... well, we have a natural heritage inventory that was completed by the Niagara Peninsula Conservation Authority, and as well, we have the South Niagara Watershed Plan, which basically are all the lands south of the Welland River. The purpose of the amendment, as I've outlined, is to update our current natural heritage policies, and these are in response to the government, or changes that I've made or mentioned already. We did have a public open house last November. We have draft policies available for review at that time. Notice of this meeting was published in the newspapers, the city clerk has outlined, as well as notification. The policies have been on the city's website as well, for anyone who wanted access to those. Our draft policies expand on our existing policies. They provide more detailed mapping and more protectionistic policies as well. The difference is the inclusion of natural heritage areas in the mapping that were previously only referenced in the text, so some of this work is done for clarity. The current policies have been reorganized as well, so we have policies under a land use section previously, and under an administrative section, so it required anyone using the official plan to flip between two sections, so we've grouped those together. And we've split our natural heritage policies into environmental protection, environmental conservation, as well as those land uses. In order to be consistent, our existing official plan is shown on the right hand of the slide. Most of what we're talking about with respect to protection of our current environmental lands are shown in the dark green on that plan. We are required by the provincial policy statements to protect and prohibit development in the provincially significant wetlands, within significant areas of endangered species, threatened species, and fish habitat. We're also required to protect significant woodlots, significant wildlife habitat, and significant areas of natural and scientific interest, which we refer to as ANCs, and also on lands adjacent to natural heritage features, unless it's been demonstrated that there's no negative impact on those natural heritage features or their functions. Currently, our environmental protection designation applies to only a portion of those lands. It includes some of those lands I've listed, as well as some flood plains and some fish habitats. We've split the current designation environmental protection into two designations. So we'd have an environmental protection area, where there would be no site alteration or development permitted. We have a new environmental conservation area, and this echoes the region's policy plan, amendment 187 I referenced a minute ago. Those environmental conservation areas are areas where site alteration or development may be permitted, but only after the appropriate studies have been done. The site alteration development on adjacent lands is also subject to the appropriate The way in which staff went about preparing this new mapping for council and for the benefit of our residents is taking the areas that were identified by the province. So you can see in the royal blue color, the large dark shapes on the map, these are the areas that the province has identified as provincially significant wetlands. As well, we have a lighter blue crosshatched area, which includes then the flood plains for various water courses that are recognized as, again, areas that must be protected. We also have fish habitats. We can see some blue lines that extend down the middle of those flood plains, which basically follows the water course, those are the fish habitats. So we basically have those areas which were fundamental to our environmental protection area policies. As well, then we have our environmental conservation area policies, and reflected within that then are the significant woodlots, which are the large green areas shown on the map. We have the areas that the Niagara Peninsula Conservation Authority has identified as regulated wetlands. As well, we have some locally significant wetlands that are also identified, and then we have some areas of life science ANCs and earth science ANCs, which are also all recognized as environmental conservation. So when we put them together, we ended up with a blended map. So the dark green areas are the environmental protection areas. You can see a significant amount of dark green. Again, I mentioned at the outset that the Conservation Authority had completed wetland mapping for Niagara Falls, so this is new mapping, didn't previously exist. So you can see much of Willoughby and Croland areas of town are affected by natural heritage policies. The dark green are areas where we're really talking about provincially significant wetlands, flood plains, and threatened or endangered species within woodlots. There is a lighter green, it's difficult to see on this slide, but those lighter green areas then are the environmental conservation areas that I outlined a minute ago. As well, you can see within these areas, some lands that we've also included in our official plan, which we're calling adjacent lands. So adjacent to these environmental protection, environmental conservation area lands is a red buffer or a red boundary line, which represents 120 meters from the provincially significant wetland feature. One of the things that we did do as staff within our mapping, those dark green areas include the provincially significant wetlands, but we've also included a 30-meter buffer around those wetlands. That 30-meter buffer is a buffer that was recognized by the Conservation Authority as areas that would protect the provincially significant wetlands. So in essence, those would be areas where there'd be longer grass and conditions left in natural condition in order that herbicides, pesticides don't get into the provincially significant areas. We did include those. You'll probably hear one of the speakers tonight say that those areas shouldn't be included. As an alternative, we could show only the provincially significant wetlands, show the 30-meter buffer as a dash line around those, that would be the outer edge of the green, and then we still have the red line, which would be the study area limits. So again, this is covering some of the same territory, going through the environmental conservation lands, again, setting out some buffers around those environmental conservation areas. So those are the areas, again, that would have to be studied as part of the process before development could occur. As well, again, this is consolidated mapping, and this is how it would appear on Schedule A1 to our official plan. I mentioned the watershed. You can see the Willoughby-Croland areas recognized as the South Niagara Watershed Plan. We have five other watersheds that are recognized. Shown in green is the Warren Creek Watershed. Shown in purple is the Beaver Dams Watershed. Red is the Shriner's Creek Watershed Plan, and yellow represents the Ten Mile Creek Watershed Plan area. There's an area in white that's kind of to the bottom and left of the green area, which is the Thompson Creek Watershed area. That area has not yet been studied. We've introduced a number of new policies. As I've said, these are to protect and to recognize the requirements of the province and the region. So our environmental policies impact, our policies will require environmental impact studies for any development proposals located on or adjacent to natural heritage features. The plan also provides policies that really maintain and improve connections between natural heritage features, recognizing the importance of corridors and linkages between our natural features, so that none of those features exist in isolation, but that our environment is all interconnected. We have policies that were introduced or revised with respect to water quality. This has to do with, again, I mentioned some vegetative buffers a minute ago, but also water conservation measures, stormwater management. This is familiar to council with respect to most subdivisions nowadays, we're processing have stormwater retention or detention facilities for water quality and quantity, as well as establishing development setbacks from these environmental features. We have a number of woodland and forest resources that the staff is encouraging to give attention of, trees through good stewardship and tree conservation bylaw, tree savings plans. The draft policies contain provisions for council to consider development compensation programs for trees destroyed prior to or as a result of development, and other changes to the section of the official plan are updated, are referenced in environmental policies. Once these policies are passed, staff will be bringing back to you a zoning amendment that would implement the official plan to zoning of those lands as environmental protection areas and environmental conservation areas. As well, we would have holding provisions for the lands that we've identified as adjacent lands. Those are the lands that were in those red buffer lines that I spoke to a minute ago, where an environmental impact study shows that development will not have a negative impact on the natural heritage functions. The holding provision could be lifted without further public needing or cost to the applicant. Therefore, we have brought forward the official plan amendment at this time with the modifications that we're proposing. We feel these are in compliance with the region's and province's policies. Policies have been drafted with input from the Niagara Region, Conservation Authority, and the public. The public has been invited tonight to give additional input, with the intent that staff would have one more opportunity to revise the policies and bring these back to council for the July 19 council meeting. Therefore, we're recommending that council receive the additional input from the public this evening, refer those comments back to staff. As well, there are a number of items of written correspondence in your package, and that those be referred back to staff as I was saying, to bring back the official plan amendment for adoption on July the 19th. Those are the highlights.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hilewicz. And once again, members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting will result in the Ontario Municipal Board dismissing any referral that it receives. Failure to sign the sign-in sheets will result in staff rejecting an appeal as per section 17, subsection 24 of the Planning Act. At this time, council will hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment. Please come forward and state your name for the record, and if you adhere to the 10-minute allowance, I'd appreciate that as well. Welcome.
Thank you. I have some fifteen copies for council staff. My name is John Barker. I live at 134 Church Street, St. Patrick's.
Thank you very much.
Boy, I think I inadvertently gave my own copy of the... Yes, thank you. There's still sufficient copies. Yes, at the outset, I would be very happy about really a new discovery I found out in preparation for this meeting, was that the extent of the provincially significant wetland, and therefore, the proposed environmental protection area and the proposed Thundering Waters subdivision is much larger than it was earlier. This certainly addresses concerns I had earlier about the impracticality of moving a wetland that was previously considered locally significant and is now properly appreciated as provincially significant. Just to give you more background about this, this is a very important forest complex. Pin oak swamp ecosystem is something that is globally rare. You have trees often that are quite ancient, that ring vernal pools that are important breeding area for amphibians. And that's why you see essentially so much green on that map, because this pin oak ecosystem is really only really found in significant scale in the whole world on both sides of the Niagara River. It's one of the reasons I was pleased to have received the award earlier, because the work I've tried to do to protect these type of ecosystems. Now, the next point, I have less happy comments. I almost think this may be an oversight, some drafting error. Regarding the Thundering Waters proposal, there is a very significant strip of forest that is south of a hydro line, at the very north limit of the Thundering Waters proposal. This strip of forest has a number of significant species, pin oak, button bush, and the ground leaf greenbrier. And I believe that in the sign that was shown for the subdivision, they did indicate an area that is to be protected, and I made a comment that it should be expanded to include the entire wooded strip, but I'm surprised to see that not mentioned on the map tonight. Now, the main additional comment I have is that when you look at the provincial, the regional, and the policies of the Niagara Peninsula Conservation Authority, you should understand that there meant to be minimal policies on a municipality. There's nothing in the Planning Act that prohibits you from having stronger or more A lot of the detail of Jean Grandoni's comments that will be coming up after me concerns the city's excellent 1993 study of forests within the urban boundary of Niagara Falls. Now, what is important to understand about this is that the city of Niagara Falls, to be commended on this, you went into a lot more detail than anyone else has done concerning these forests. In going beyond the minimum standards, if you were to have your decisions favorably, let's say, adjudicated by the Ontario Municipal Board, I think it would be necessary to show that these decisions have a thoughtful basis in reality, that they're based by good empirical study, and are not arbitrary. And this is what the 1993 study did, and I'm familiar with the process the region went through to identify significant woodlands. They did not go into the same kind of depth that was done in the 1993 study in Niagara Falls. They essentially looked at aerial studies, aerial photographs, and they did cursory work on the ground, basically to make sure that there was actually a forest there as shown in the aerial photographs. You know, that the trees were of a minimum height and thickness, and there was some kind of tree canopy, where if you look at the 1993 studies, they go in great detail about the species composition, the age of the trees, and the understory of the vegetation. about the species composition, the age of the trees, and the understory of the vegetation. And the region's study that they base this significant woodlands on is totally silent in all these matters. It just shows forests on a map. And there is on page two, additional comment there that for some peculiar reason, the area that is the Shriners Creek Conservation Authority land is not listed as an environmental protection area, instead the more permissive conservation area. Again, I think this is almost an oversight, land that forests there that are there that are protected by a government agency, one would think would be under the more protective zoning of a protection area. And the final comment is that there were some comments by a landowner in the Willoughby area who doesn't seem to be aware of new changes to the Niagara Falls official plan that thinks the current estate, the former proposed estate residential is a designation where that designation that was proposed was not accepted by the OMB, and the OMB decision was later implemented by council.
Thank you very much, Dr. Barker. Any questions, Dr. Barker, by members of council? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment other than the applicant? Please come forward.
I would like to pass on, my name is Jean Grandoni, Route Number One, Garner Road, Niagara Falls. I have the second part of my letter that was attached to the one that you have. There was some misunderstanding, and it didn't get in the agenda it was supposed to, so I would like to give it up. This is the letter of December the 10th. And I was getting confused myself with the policy numbers that I mentioned in the December the 10th letter. Those policy numbers were from the original draft of last fall, so they may be different in some cases than the numbers in the April draft. Mr. Chairman, members of council, one of my biggest concerns is mentioned in my latest letter of June the 11th, and that's the forests that have been omitted, mainly while they are all north of the Welland River. I did not do south of the Welland River, there was no time, and I did drive around to verify my findings, and I've listed those forests, I won't go through them all. Suffice to say that north of the Welland River, we're very short on provincial objectives for acreages of forest cover, and so I think we need to look more carefully at the ones that have been omitted. And as John, Dr. Barker, was saying, if you're relying on the region's mapping, one might go so far as to say is it might be a little careless, and we need to take a look at these forests that have been left off. I wanted to Google them for you, but I didn't get around to doing that. These forests should be preserved as there are too few remaining. Such an observation was made on the Welland County's 1932 soils map with regard to forest cover, and we've been cutting them down since then, so you can imagine how short we are. They help to recharge the water table for farm wells, provide wildlife habitat, which is in short supply as evidenced by deer and coyotes wandering into the city. I mean, I live in the country, what's left of it, and I've got coyotes on my back door. Slow down fierce winds and provide oxygen and absorb pollutants, things that you all There's been some inner-city forests omitted, and I've listed them. And you people, if there's anyone interested watching from home, you should get interested in what's going on here. There's six small forests mapped in 1993 north of the Welland River. I see they've been put on as ECA areas in your latest mapping. They are east of Stanley. That's one good thing that's been done. I would commend staff for their efforts. The inaccurate designation of the forests east of Kaler, south of Mountain, and also the two large ones, south of Mountain Road and west of Kaler, I think they should be reevaluated by M&amp;R if they have not already been. There's the remnant forest on the W-51 tributary of Shriners Creek in the urban area. It's revealed in your own studies of 1993 to have pin oak and tulip tree and could probably be classified as a PSW, provincially significant wetland. Corridor emissions, the NSNT right-of-way has long been mapped by the city planning department, and I don't know how it got missed, but I'd like to see it put back on. It's not only an existing trail, but it's treed as well, and it's not on here as a hedge row or a heritage feature. Also, the fernwood subdivision, I believe, should be a provincially significant wetland. It has three species of provincial significance, the button bush, the greenbrier, and the whitewood aster. And after all this time, it's still not properly designated, in my opinion. Under definitions, the drip line of the forest needs definition. It's not in your definition section at the back of your policies. It's a factor in providing adequate buffering to the forest. It's the umbrella of the tree. In fact, I spoke to the Niagara Parks Commission, to their tree man, and he said, if you have an umbrella and you have, say, only 10 feet overhanging into the buffer, but 20 feet on the inside of the forest, you have to take the 20 feet as the outside buffer, not the 10. Valley lands, under your definitions again, I think it needs a reference to climate and how the climate contributes to good air drainage to decrease risk of early spring frost. And I've attached in the letter of December 10th excerpts from the OMB decision of 1979, where three expert witnesses testified as to soil and some testified to climate. On page 10 of the long sheets, Ralph Krueger said, "Frost hazard is lessened by air drainage, the flow or circulation of air which is promoted by the escarpment, the Niagara gorge, gullies, and ravines, and by the proximity of bodies of water." And that includes valley lands, I would say. The other important thing about valley lands is to prevent basement flooding, which you've had a stomachful here, and it's costing you millions. And that really made me upset when I saw the Conservation Authority wanting to weaken your policies that staff was trying to get through here. I couldn't believe it. When do they start learning from the mistakes of the past? Shriners Creek, classic example. You're lucky nobody sued you on Shriners Creek. I don't like to talk like this because this council, not all of them were around to vote on things that promote, that caused that damage downstream. But one of the biggest causes was the filling in, not enough buffering, filling in of the floodplain, piping of the stream. And who's paying now? The taxpayers, not the Conservation Authority even. The hedge rows, I see no excuse for not mapping these. You can use aerials. The region has spent hundreds of thousands on aerials. They're readily available to anyone, even to the public, and the hedge rows are well shown on there. Or if you want, Google it, you'll find it.
Mrs. Grandoni, she has two minutes.
Okay, and again, the NSNT is a hedge row. And the map E, the last one here, should show, I would like to see it show the actual diversions so that you understand what's going on downstream. This large area here, about 100 acres, was diverted from the Ten Mile to the Shriners. There's about 100 acres diverted from, that's east of the Queenie, and then west of the Queenie, there's about 100 acres diverted here from the Beaver Dens into the Shriners. And that should be shown on a map somewhere. It's not the natural drainage area. The Conservation Authority requesting a weakening in the buffering, and they even have suggested that you change a lot of the environmental protection to environment conservation. They're undermining their own clean water goals. The only clean drinking water in many cases for wildlife in our area, because of the sewage pollution, is in these wetland forests, some of them that are not even recognized and have been totally eliminated from the map.
Mrs. Grandoni, your time is concluded. Thank you very much.
Okay, I wanted to say one more thing, if I could, with regard to the December letter, page four, my conclusions. Too many loopholes in the existing legislation, especially the tree bylaw. You people watching at home, you need to get after your council and your MPs to change the tree bylaw, to get after the Conservation Authority, to allow staff to proceed with a higher standard than what they have.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else other than the applicant who wishes to speak to this matter? Please come forward. For the record, again, please.
Good evening, Your Worship. For the record, my name is Ed Lustig, and I'm a lawyer with the law firm of Rodrick and Partners in Niagara Falls, and I'm here this evening representing Thundering Waters Development Corporation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Worship. Your Worship, Thundering Waters Development Corporation is a local company that is owned by local people, and some of them are here with me this evening, including Dragon and Nick Manavick, Mario Duva, Tony Zapatelli, and Fred Varela. Mark Bastiano is also an owner, he's not here tonight. And I'm joined by Rick Brady, who is our planner for this development. I think all of you are familiar with the Thundering Waters development. It is about 545 acres. It's bounded on the north by Oldfield Road, on the west by Dorchester, on the south by Chippewa Creek Road, and on the east by various parcels, including your own industrial park. In fact, this council, this particular council, in April of 2008, approved an official plan amendment for Thundering Waters where you allowed for the redesignation of lands that were largely industrial and open space to be converted to residential for the use of the developers to build homes eventually, and some commercial and a little bit of institutional. And a large part of it was set aside by you for environmental protection. In fact, at that time, with the official plan that you approved, official plan 81, there was 175 acres of land set aside, which is about 30 or more than 30% of the whole site, upon which we have no development rights whatsoever. And in my experience, that's probably the most significant creation of environmentally protected lands among any developments that I'm aware of in Niagara Falls. That particular reservation for environmental protection was really the culmination of about two years of work, starting with work we did with the M&amp;R a couple of years earlier when they identified to us that there was only 126 acres that needed to be protected, but it increased up to 170, 175 by the time you dealt with it. And what's significant is that when you approved of it, you had the region also supporting it, you had the MPC also supporting it, and the province, through the M&amp;R that has jurisdiction in this area, they didn't appeal the approval that was obtained. And so we had approval to have part of it designated as residential and part of it for environmental protection. There was an appeal filed, however, by Mr. Barker to this official plan amendment, but we dealt with John and had a number of meetings with him, Mr. Brady and I, and eventually he withdrew his appeal, and we entered into minutes of settlement that the board approved. And one of the conditions that he insisted upon and that we were willing to agree to was that in spite of setting aside 175 acres as approved, we would allow, if the M&amp;R wanted, further review of the environmental protection lands. And in fact, as we proceeded after approval to starting to do a secondary plan, which was a requirement of the official plan amendment in order to do some further investigation and do some further studies, the M&amp;R actually contacted us, probably partly because of the conditions in our minutes of settlement, possibly because employees of the MPC asked them to review our property. And that began a program that lasted about 15 months, where the M&amp;R went on our site looking for all kinds of things, Jefferson salamanders and various other things, and ultimately, to bring this fairly quickly to a conclusion, last March, middle of March, after discussion, research, science, there was a culmination of these efforts with the production of a plan, which you can't see very well, but trust me, this is the M&amp;R's work, and they signed off on the EPA area, and they increased the size from roughly 175 acres to about 206. So now we're in the realm of 40% of this site is being protected without any development rights whatsoever. And what's left is for us to try to develop. And it's not that we're going to be looking to develop this without any interest in the environment, on the contrary. That will be addressed as we proceed through a secondary plan process that's been described by the official plan, which itself has to be an amendment to the official plan. What is interesting is that a couple of weeks ago, you had a presentation from the planning department that identified these residential lands, among others, as significant in terms of satisfying the requirements that you have for growth within the urban area boundaries. So these residential lands are going to provide you with the supply to 2031 of what you need in order to provide housing within the urban area boundaries, and arguably with And arguably, without them, you'd be going, among other things, to look for expansions of the urban area boundaries, and I know nobody wants to do that. So we want to develop these lands for housing mainly, about 3,000 or 3,500 units, and we're going to do that responsibly. So that's where we really are with what has happened. Now, with respect to the proposal tonight, first of all, I want to commend your staff. They've done an excellent job, and we support what they've done. The only area, if you will, that we have some concern on is the mapping in Schedule A. And actually, Mr. Hrlavich has alluded to the fact that our concern is that the mapping in Schedule A specifically and clearly defines the areas that the M&amp;R has defined as environmental protection areas and not include the 30-meter buffering. And the reason for that is that we completely agree with buffering. We're not going to dismiss buffering. We expect to submit ourselves to buffering. That's one of the requirements that we know exists. But it shouldn't be part of the EPA lands. And that's according to the region. The region doesn't include it in its EPA lands. The province obviously haven't because they haven't mapped this for us with the plans that have been now submitted with it included. And perhaps more to the point of why I'm saying this beyond just policy is that it's arbitrary. And it may be at some point that we want to have the latitude to be able to prove to you scientifically that 30 meters isn't required. And we don't want to have to come back to do another official plan amendment if we can give you good reasons to allow us to develop within that 30 meters without having to go through another official plan amendment. Counsel, that's the only area of concern that we have. And Mr. Hrlavich has suggested a, shall we call it, alternative, which is acceptable to us, which is that you take out of the EPA designation in Schedule A, the buffer, and you show it as adjacent lands in Schedule A1 so that it's of the quality or the definition of adjacent lands. And then we'll deal with this on a case-by-case basis. And if we can satisfy you and the region and whoever else has a say in this, we will. And if we can't, we won't be able to. But at least we'll have that latitude, which I think, given what we've been through over the period of time we've been through, with what we've submitted to, what we've agreed to do is reasonable, and it's in keeping with what the province and the region do. So if those changes are made, and I might add, there needs to be a text change as well because there is one item in the environmental protection policies that speaks to the 30-meter buffer being part of the EPA, and it's not in compliance with the region's policy in this regard. It's 12.2.12, and it's the last sentence, which reads, "Development or site alteration is not permitted within 30 meters as a minimum of provincially significant wetlands. Consequently, for clarity of the designation mapping, this buffer has been included within the EPA designation." If you're going to do what Mr. Hrlavich has suggested as the alternative, which we agree with, you need to remove that as well. And again, we're not looking to get out of having to provide buffering, but we think that it should be done on a non-arbitrary way, in a way that applies some science and some logic to what exactly is the appropriate buffering. So those are my submissions. Mr. Brady and I are here to add anything or answer any questions. And again, we're supportive of what your staff has done and the compromise that's being suggested.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lustig. Are there any questions of Mr. Lustig or Mr. Brady? Okay, thank you. And we have the additional mapping information, I believe, that you have submitted, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Your Worship.
Okay, thank you. Once again, is there anyone other than the advocate who wishes to make a submission at this point? Is there anyone other than the advocate who wishes to make a submission? For clarification, please come forward. Yes? Just so they can hear you at home.
This is a question for clarification.
Yes, this is totally a question of clarification. With respect, I had difficulty understanding the previous presenter. He referred to Schedule A, and I don't see buffering on Schedule A. I see the buffering in other schedules. This is, I'd like to see where the buffering is on Schedule A that's referred to because I don't see it there.
Okay, thank you. We'll see if we can get that question answered, Mr. Lustig or Mr. Brady?
I think perhaps the confusion is that we've determined in discussing this with the planning department that the representation of what the M&amp;R approved and is on Schedule A actually includes 30 meters, and it doesn't refer to buffering, which is really part of our problem.
Yes.
And it doesn't delineate it. It is part of, because when we looked at the mapping, we said, this looks a lot bigger than what the M&amp;R approved. And so we went to planning and we said, what is this? And they said, well, we included 30 meters. And we said, why would you do that? And so what we want to do is, in essence, shrink it to exactly what the M&amp;R has approved. And then in Schedule A1, and there's many other ways perhaps to do it, but in Schedule A1 where you're describing adjacent lands, these, I think Mr. Hrlavich indicated that you'd have around the environmental protection lands, not just for us, but it would be for others, because I think you've done it for all of the lands, have you not? Yes. And I think the same, I don't act for anybody else, but I think that the same principle would apply. You would deal with it the same way.
Mr. Lustig, is my understanding that you've made your submission on your mapping to the planning department, is that correct?
Yes, we have.
Okay, thank you. Good, thank you very much. Is there anyone other than the advocate again who wishes to speak to this matter? Okay, having seen none, are there any further questions from members of council or persons Having seen none, again, the public meeting then with respect to the proposed official plan and zoning bylaw amendment is now concluded. And the pleasure of counsel, the council wished to make a motion with respect to the official plan amendment. We do have a recommendation before us, members of council.
We just wanted to receive the additional input. Have a recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Ianone, that we receive the information as additional input and to come back to the meeting of July 19, 2010. Clear, members of council, a call to vote, all those in favor. Sheen Anas, thank you very much. Thank you for your submissions, everyone.
Thank you, Your Worship.
Members of council, I want to begin this evening by offering our condolences to a city staff member, to Brenda Flores, on the recent passing of Helen Bacon, her mother. Brenda is a transit operator with our fleet, and our sincere sympathy goes to her family and on their sad loss. As well, we are saddened to hear the loss of a longtime upstanding member of our community, Mrs. Shirley Carr. Among her many accomplishments, Shirley was a decorated labor activist, speaking for the rights of workers throughout her life. She will be sadly missed, but her legacy of advocacy will certainly live on. On a happy note, I'm pleased to bring you your attention to some positive events that we've had to take place in our community recently. And I'm proud to say that we had an outstanding opening event at our new, brand-new Gale Center yesterday. We were pleased to see crowds of hundreds of our residents gather at the ICE complex to take a look, to enjoy free public skating, entertainment, and to meet the volunteers and staff who made all this a great success. Of course, we all are thanks to our recreation, culture, community development facility staff who worked diligently to ensure that the space was ready and prepared for the grand opening events of last week. Donors were thanked on Thursday, and the public was also able to enjoy the facility when we all gathered there on Sunday. A special thank you to Rob McDonald and Steve Hamilton and their teams for the exceptional effort. Also, we are happy to acknowledge the positive news of more investment in our community. Go Transit announced their plans for a $1.4 million expansion to upgrade the platform in Niagara Falls, the train station on bridge, to ensure the continuity of weekend service into Niagara Falls. Ridership numbers of visitors getting here on the go have been exceptional. We look forward to seeing more of the same throughout the summer and in the future. Special thanks to our Member of Parliament, provincial rep as well. The $700,000 contribution by each of those level of government is much appreciated. On another positive note, you may know that we played host to Breakfast TV, the cast and crew, when they broadcast their show live from Niagara Falls at the Oaks Garden Theater on June 18th. It was an exciting show, and they reported back with exceptional reviews in response to a program being shot here on location. We are thrilled to have them and certainly look forward to having them come back at any time. Earlier this month, we officially opened the doors at our Niagara Falls museum at its new temporary home at the Armory on Victoria Avenue. I invite residents and visitors to take advantage of this unique opportunity to see the museum while its displays are being exhibited at the Armory. And coming up this week, we will have our annual Canada Day celebration, and I hope that many residents and visitors will join together to celebrate with us on Thursday. Our July 1st Canada Day event kicks off at 9:30 a.m. with the pre-parade show at Optimus Park. The parade begins at 10 o'clock and will travel west down Morrison from Drummond Road and end up at Optimus Park. Festivities will last all day until 4 p.m. with entertainment on three outdoor stages as well as inside the Optimus Hall. We invite you to visit the carnival as well, to have a piece of cake, and to enjoy free swimming at any one of our municipal pools all day during Canada Day. Come out and celebrate with this always anticipated incredible community event. We hope to see everyone there. Also, again, I'd like to acknowledge, if I may, in fact, we did make a presentation to Dr. Bakker, so congratulations to Dr. Bakker on his award that he received earlier this evening. That concludes my remarks. Okay, yes, Counselor Carrio.
Mr. Mayor, I noticed that I'd like to recognize and welcome Fay Booker.
Yes.
Our new chairman of the Niagara Parks Commission to our council.
If you're just going to do that, thank you very much.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, welcome Fay, and we're glad to have you here. For those who haven't recognized Mrs. Booker, she is the new chair of the Niagara Parks Commission, so thank you for sitting throughout the council meeting this evening. We appreciate your attendance this evening. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Carrio. This time, I'm going to call on reports and ratification of community services, community actions. I'm going to call on Chair Counselor Ianone.
Additional communication?
Sorry. I'm sorry, additional communication. Before I do that, my apologies. Communications. Yes, we have communications, the Victoria Center BIA requesting approval of their 2010 budget, recommendation for the approval of council. Moved by Counselor Fisher, seconded by Counselor Maves. Any further comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor, motions carried. The Falls UBI requesting approval of their 2010 budget for the, yes, moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Fisher. Once again, any comments? Having seen none, all those in favor, motions carried. We have requests from the Serbian Club requesting July 10th be proclaimed as Nicolet Tesla Day. Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Ianone. Once again, any further comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor, motions carried. Mr. Clerk, additional items for council's consideration?
There's the additional swimming pool fees report that had been deferred from the last meeting.
Okay, we have that report before us, members of council. Moved by Counselor Ianone, seconded by Counselor Ghadadi. Okay, we have motion on the floor. Any further comments or questions with respect to the report? Having seen none, we'll call to vote, all those in favor. Please raise your hands, all those in favor. Motion's carried unanimously. Thank you very much. I'm sorry, Counselor Thompson? Contrary, I'm sorry, so noted, Counselor Thompson, contrary. Okay, we'll proceed on, move on with reports now. I'll call on the Chair of the Community Services Committee, Counselor Ianone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The following items are to be ratified from tonight's meeting of the Community Services Committee. The minutes of the June 14, 2010 meeting be approved. Under presentation, the council support the proposed changes to the QEW as presented by Genovar. Under MW 2010-23, Snick's Avenue Drainage, that the following report be received for the information of council. Under MW 210-45, Sam's Montrose Hotel update, that payment in the amount of $47,615.45 be made to the owner of Sam's Montrose Hotel in consideration for the cost incurred for the constructing of a municipal sewer across the QEW right of way to the benefit of the adjacent lands. Under MW 2010-48, Mewburn Road Bridge closure update, that the Mewburn Road Bridge class environmental assessment, June 2010, be received, and the preferred alternative to replace existing structure be approved. That staff be directed to pursue opportunities for funding from the Federal Gateways and Border Crossing Fund, Canadian National Railways, and the region of Niagara, and that the notice of study completion be advertised effective June 29, 2010. Under RNC 2010-15, advertising policy, that council approve the advertising policy with the amendment that no political advertising be permitted. Under CAO 2010-06, Gale Center alarms, that the report be deferred. Under FS 2010-09, open air burning, that council support the existing open air burning bylaw. Under F210-43, Water Sustainability Plan Report, that council approve the water report as submitted. Under F210-39, Water Billing Update, that council approve the monthly billing of combined water hydro accounts by the Niagara Peninsula Energy effective August 2010. Under F210-14, 2009 Reserves and Reserve Funds, that the city council receive this report on the 2009 activity in reserves and reserve funds. I can hear you. Under PD 2010-52, request by the Downtown BIA to utilize funds from the Downtown CIP Reserve, that the report, that the request by the Downtown BIA be approved, and under New Business, that the petition presented by Mr. Zapatelli be referred to staff for review and comment. And I still move.
Moved by Counselor Ianone, seconded by Counselor Carrio. Any further comments or questions? Yes, Counselor, sorry, Counselor Peter Angelo first, then Counselor Ghadadi.
Worship, I just want to be shown as opposed to the one that dealt with the advertising for the city.
Okay, so noted. Counselor Ghadadi.
I would also like to be seen as opposed.
Okay, Counselor Ianone.
Thank you. I didn't get to vote downstairs as chair, but I'm also opposed to that.
Okay. Thank you.
I was opposed to, but I didn't really care.
Okay, so noted.
Mr. Mayor, I think the point that they're trying to make is, I didn't vote downstairs. It wasn't a tiebreaker, and you now have four, four, and four against.
Yes, I did vote downstairs opposing it, so I'll maintain that same position. So that doesn't change things. Okay, thank you. So move on with the, with, in favor of the negative, of not, to eliminate.
That's one of it.
Yes. Correct? No, is that what you're saying? It was a, the motion was not to allow, sorry, Counselor Ianone.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, interrupted my community services, but I could hear that discussion going on here, and I was trying not to repeat it as I read. But I think the premise they're going at is, you now have, you're going to ratify a bylaw, or you're going to ratify things done downstairs that have now a tied vote in regards to an issue. So I guess we want clarification. Does it pass now, or does it fail now?
Well, you were the chair, so you said.
I didn't vote.
You didn't vote. You have seven, seven votes, actually six downstairs. No, seven.
We had seven downstairs.
Seven upstairs, that's correct.
It was four, three. I didn't vote because I chaired it.
That's right. So now we have, we have a tie, so basically that egates.
It would be deferred.
Now, we have a motion to defer, which is non-debatable. Is there a second to that motion? Counselor Peter Angelo?
Just that one issue.
Non-debatable?
Just the one issue.
Just that issue? We're still dealing with this issue. All those in favor of deferral? Okay, the matter's deferred, thank you. Okay, we'll proceed with the rest of the report. Move the recommendation by Counselor Ianone, seconded by Mr. Clerk. Who's the second?
Counselor Carrio.
Counselor Carrio. Okay. And, all right, I'll call to vote, all those in favor. Motion's carried, thank you very much. Call and ratification of any camera recommendations. Mr. Clerk, would you please present those?
Yeah, a couple items. Let staff be authorized to proceed with the acquisition of necessary properties required to construct the road improvements for Kaler Road from Lundys Lane to Beaver Dams, as set out in the, in the related report, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute any and all agreements and documents related to the people mover system.
Okay, you've heard the motion or the report. And we would move ratification by Counselor Ianone, seconded by Counselor Thompson. Any comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor, motions carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Move on to the consent agenda, pleasure of council.
Move to consent agenda.
Move the entire consent agenda, moved by Counselor Carrio, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo. Yes.
I have one question on an item I don't really need to pull it out, though.
Here, please hold it louder. Yes.
Yeah, I just have one question on one of the items.
Okay.
Compliance Audit Committee, Your Worship.
Yes.
I was asked by a solicitor in town a long time ago whether or not this committee was going to be struck and how they would go about applying to get on it. What can I tell that person?
Perhaps the clerk will explain it's a regional effort. Mr. Clerk, do you want to talk about that?
Yes, I understand. Well, as the report sets out, we actually tried to get this committee last council term. Council was willing to delegate its authority under the Municipal Elections Act, and at that time, we had no one interested, or at least no one who had the qualifications that applied. Since that time, the Municipal Elections Act has been amended, which now requires that all councils appoint a compliance audit committee, so it makes it a little more arms-length than what it was under the act before. Because of the difficulties we had in Niagara Falls, getting people that were qualified and interested, discussion with the area clerks was that we sort of band together and try to solicit applications on a region-wide basis. That way, it's even more arms-length. So for example, if it was a solicitor in Niagara Falls who gets appointed to the committee, he may hear compliance audit requests in Port Colbert, so there's more of that arms-length. So the, all of the municipalities that are participating in it, including the school boards, which also have an obligation under the Municipal Elections Act, we will boards, which also have an obligation under the Municipal Elections Act, we will, once all of those approvals are in place, we will be doing ads in the paper probably in the coming weeks. So before the end of July, there will be ads. We're looking at setting up a standalone website, and applicants can either go through the website or go to their respective municipal clerks and get applications. So that'll happen within the next month.
Counselor Peter Angelo?
Counselor.
Okay, thank you. So we do have a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you very much. Move on to the bylaws. Mr. Clerk, are there any additional bylaws?
No, Your Worship.
Counselor Fisher?
I want to oppose, and I'm against bylaw 2010-91, and that is pertaining to the group home for 17 people. I was opposed to it the last meeting, and I'm opposed to the bylaw.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Ianone?
Yes.
Okay. Counselor Thompson? Okay. So we have a motion to give the interest of bylaws and give the bylaw first reading. Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor DiDati. Council's heard the motion. Any questions or comments? Having seen none, all those in favor, motions carried. Mr. Clerk?
Bylaws 2010-88 to 2010-95 be approved.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to give the bylaws a second and third reading? Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor DiDati. Once again, council's heard the motion. Any comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor, motions carried.
Bylaws 2010-88 to 2010-95 were at a second and third time and passed.
Thank you. Any new business this evening? I have Counselor Ianone, Counselor Maves, and Counselor Carrio.
Very trivial, Mr. Mayor. I had a call from a resident today who attended the opening of the Porpad yesterday, thought it was spectacular. Unfortunately, he was in the Hall of Fame pictures that were posted far too high for him or his grandchildren to see. And as I am also vertically challenged, I couldn't see them either. So he was wondering if it was possible to have them lowered so that family members can actually see them in their heyday.
I've already had a chance to express that to some of our staff, so.
Thank you.
They're going to be building a platform? No, I'm just, I'm just kidding. Okay, thank you. Counselor Maves?
Yes, Your Worship. Along that same line, I had an email too regarding some of the items that are in some of the other arenas. I think I emailed Mr. Todd today. Are any other photos or any coming from some of the other arenas?
Yes, maybe the CAO can address that, and he'll explain the process.
Claiming, Mr. Mayor, and I think the issue that you talked about in the email this morning's been resolved. That was a matter that was an award of provincial significance, but because it wasn't tied to a specific team, it kind of fell through the cracks. But that's been resolved, and it's, I think they've talked to the family already.
We will see that in the new facility super.
Yes, and the other artifacts, what we did is, anything that belonged to any specific organization, we've given that back to the organization so that they will be able to display that material within their own room or boardroom that is located within the arena. And also in the main hallway, you would have noticed yesterday, it was a large sort of common display area under the stairway, and that's going to be used to rotate material through for champions during the current year. So I think we've got most of it resolved, and, but if there's any other feedback you get, just pass it on to us, because there may be some articles that have been missed.
Just one last thing. Any idea where my, my team picture is from 1956?
Yes, we sent that to the museum where it was appropriately.
Is that at the Armory Street Museum? Thank you.
In the historic section, yes, of course. Thank you. We have Counselor Carrio.
Thank you, Worship. I have another one of those by a granddaughter of someone, of a banner that was hanging in the old arena of Passinlaw. Is this the same one, the banner?
The banner was hanging, I hope?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, as I say, as we've resolved that issue.
We did respond earlier to that, so thank you for that. Counselor DiDati?
Thank you, Worship. Sorry to hear about your picture not being at eye level, Counselor Maves, because I noticed our CAO's picture, his basketball team in his glory days, was right at eye level. It was right in the perfect spot, so hopefully we can pull a few strings.
Privileges of officer.
Yeah, exactly. Your Worship, I just want to bring attention to the, to the council. I received a fax the other day from someone. It was a fax from the NHS, from Dr. Joanna Hope, the intern chief of staff, to the NHS family physicians. I'm not sure if anyone is aware of this right now or not, but I'll just read a couple excerpts from the letter. The letter reads, "The NHS is concerned regarding the availability of physicians to staff the emergency departments and urgent care centers throughout the summer months due to vacation schedules and continued challenges in the area of recruitment." And it's, you know, ironic here that we heard this exact problem mentioned to us by the past physicians that manned the ER here in the city. Goes on to say that there's an effort to identify possible solutions to address these serious challenges, both in the short term and the long term. So it looks like it's an ongoing issue. And one of their ideas, they're reaching out to family physicians, and they're asking that they respond to this urgent request as soon as possible. They mention the word urgent and serious many times. Obviously, we have a problem, and we should be specifically concerned here in Niagara Falls, with the summer months upon us, millions of visitors in town, and they're planning right now to make their trips to Niagara Falls. I think it's sad that prior to the NHS intervention, we never had a single missed shift or shift that wasn't covered by the ER physicians. It's obviously clearly avoidable, and we find ourselves in this situation today. So, Your Worship, I would just simply make the motion that we ask the NHS to update us as to the status and the progress in correcting this serious problem.
Would you like to make that a motion?
Yes.
Moved by Counselor DiDati, seconded by Counselor Ianone. Any further discussion? Counselor Ianone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.